It's 6:30. I hereby call this meeting to order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is with a heavy heart I will share that our beloved Human Resources Director Elise Brown passed away last week. Elise was a very hard worker and a dear friend. She was completely dedicated to Peachtree City. Our hearts go out to her wonderful family and she will be missed. With that, we'll observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Announcements, awards, special recognition, I believe we have none. Public comment?
We have two residents signed up to speak. First person signed up is Suzanne Brown.
Suzanne Brown, I live in Crescent Oak. I was publicly besmirched by a member of council after I spoke during the public hearing at the last city council meeting. This is particularly sad since every council member recently voted in favor of a resolution supporting civility and decorum. For the record, I began objecting to our city council's insincere and misleading antics years before I ever decided to run for an elected office. I'm just one of your citizens who is part of a larger movement to rein in an unruly city council majority that opposes its constituents at every turn. You don't listen to the very people who elected you. Thank God for term limits. And thank you, Councilwoman King, for proving my point that change is badly needed. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next person signed up to speak is Carrie Cook.
My name is Carrie Cook. I live at 152 Lakeside Drive. I've got several areas I wanted to touch on. I think it was at the last meeting a gentleman brought up the situation with a golf cart accident where an individual ended up dying from the accident. And I walk the paths like a lot of people do here, and I just believe it's totally dangerous, you know, when you go out there. But I love to get out there. But I think there's things that we could implement, and I brought them up, one or two things before. One of them was having the decals on the back of the golf cart or some identification where when this speeder or reckless driver goes by you, you could see his decal, you could report it to the police. Both of them are on the side, or they are on the side, so by the time the person gets by, you can't do anything about it. And one thing, or a couple of other things, I guess, is people should notify you when they're coming up behind you. And most people, 99 out of 100 people, don't do it. All you have to do is say "on your left," ring your bell lightly. I think there ought to be something like when you renew your registration, that maybe you see a video, and part of that video is instructions about signaling when you come up behind someone to let them know that you're behind them. So I think those are two things right there. I forget my third one. But at any rate, golf cart safety, I think we do need to pay more attention to safety on the cart paths and do what we can to increase or decrease the likelihood of accidents on the golf cart. Another one, village signs. I know Mr. Beverly brought up about another village, I think, that's here in Peachtree City that I didn't know about. But one thing I've observed is the sign for Glenlock that used to be there at Walgreens, right there at that intersection, disappeared. It's on the south side, so you see the Glenlock sign and you know you're in the village. I propose that we ought to put the sign up again. You can put it low so it won't obstruct your view when you're turning there. But to identify continually, continuously our village concept to people who are traveling through Peachtree City, if that's our intention. And I think in the agenda packet for that 52 acres, they mentioned about village in there, so the terminology was mentioned there. Removal of dead trees, I'm just saying that I see a number of dead trees along the cart path, along the lake, and I would just urge people to report them and people address them. There's a huge one right by the small lake there that feeds Lake Peachtree. It's been there for some time. One thing I brought up to the manager, John Rory, when he was here, was about the shrubbery next to the small lake, next to Lake Peachtree, where you used to be able to have a nice view of that lake. And you can't see the lake now. The shrubs have grown up. We don't have to cut them all the way down, but I think aesthetically it would really be nice for people when they're passing by on their golf cart, biking or walking, as they could see that beautiful lake. And if you've been there at times, you'll see eagles that will go down and pull fish out of that shallow lake. So, you know, it's not something like, you know, a million-dollar budget item, but these are just some things I think that we could give attention to and just help situations here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There are no further speakers. Agenda changes, council, any? Nope, all right. Minutes. August 17th, 2023, special call meeting minutes. August 17th, 2023, regular meeting minutes. August 17th, 2023, executive session minutes. Can I get a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve the August 17th, 2023, special call meeting minutes, the August 17th, 2023, regular meeting minutes, and the August 17th, 2023, executive session minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda, we have none. Old agenda items, we have none. New agenda items, we have none. Public hearings, we have two. 923-02, variance for 100 rolling green to allow privacy fence in front yard. Robin Caillou.
I will read the protocol. When the public hearing is open, members of the council will become hearers. No action on their part is in order until the mayor declares the hearing complete. First, city staff will present the request and provide an assessment of compliance with city code. Then the mayor will allow up to 10 minutes for the speaker on each side of the issue to present evidence. No individual member of the public will be given more than five minutes to speak. The time limits may only be extended by a majority vote of council and will be divided equally between those supporting and those opposing the issue. The mayor will recognize the applicant and those supporting the issue to present evidence. Remarks will be limited to a total of 10 minutes. The mayor will then recognize those opposing the issue to present evidence for up to 10 minutes. Prior to closing the public hearing, city staff and the public will be given the opportunity to ask questions of either or both sides of the issue. When the mayor and council are assured that the presentation of evidence is complete, the public hearing shall be ended, and the council may then debate the issue and render a decision. All speakers from the public are asked to follow these rules. One, please wait to be recognized by the mayor. Two, come to the microphone and state your name and neighborhood prior to making remarks. Three, keep individual remarks under five minutes and do not repeat comments. And then four, address all comments to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Jasmine. The variance request at 100 rolling green is brought by the property owner. They, their property is located, let's see if I can get the, there we go, okay. There we go. Outlined in yellow here, it is a corner lot at the intersection of Rolling Green and Blue Smoke. It is zoned R22, which is a single-family zoning district. They have on their property right now, as you can see in the top photograph, a privacy fence that was built in 1982 when the pool was built on the property. They came in for a building permit to build a fence in an identical manner. However, the ordinance has long since changed, and now fences in front yards or fences that face a public road have to be no taller than four feet tall and 50% transparent, like a picket fence design. And so they would like to have a privacy fence. It exceeds the ordinance, and that is why they're requesting a variance. That is much too much text, but this is just a reminder of what the criteria are for the variance, special circumstances applicable to the property, or that the ordinance would create a practical difficulty. There's some extraordinary circumstance, that it would not constitute a granting of a special privilege, and would not be material detrimental to the public health or create any inconsistencies with a comprehensive plan. The applicant is here tonight to answer any questions and present their case.
Thank you very much. Would the applicant care to speak or share some comments?
Hi, my name is Emily Sisanti. I live at 100 Rolling Green. I just would like to express our desire to replace the existing fence really has to do with the safety of our children and providing them a safe environment in our, on our own property. Blue Smoke Trail is an extremely busy road, and it's the side of our house that faces Blue Smoke Trail where our pool is. And behind our house is the seventh tee, I believe, of the Flat Creek Golf Course. So it's either car traffic or golf cart traffic all day long. That's all. I don't know if there are questions I need to answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Can I get a show of hands? We'll take a show of hands of who wishes to speak in favor. I'll take a show of hands of who wishes to speak in opposition, just so I can watch the time. Thank you. If anybody would like to speak in favor, please step up.
Yes, my name is Tom Crofton, and I've lived in Peachtree City over 40 years. And the people that are requesting this variance are our neighbors across the street. And I can just tell you that this property that you're talking about, before they bought this house, was probably the worst landscaped property on our, it was an eyesore. And they have created a plan, and they've resawed it, redid their front house, painted, looking at roof replacement, and, and they want a fence around their pool. And the pool is kind of elevated, so that the fence needs to be a little bit higher than normal because it's, the pool's elevated. They want a privacy. And then the fence on the side is to, to, to prevent golfers on the tee box from, there's been some issues where the golfers, it's number seven hole or number 16 hole. And at that point, a lot of golfers have a tendency to want to relieve themselves from the beer. And with their two, two children, and it's my understanding, they've already witnessed people peeing in the bushes, and there is no fence there. I don't know if it matters, but I have just, I didn't know the ordinance had changed. But if you look at 605 Golf View, they have the exact fence that, that they're trying to put up. It was put up within the last month. And it's a total replacement of a fence, including additional, additional areas of this fence. A block behind me put up a six-foot fence probably four or five months ago, and it's about 150-foot stretch on Blue Smoke. Right on Blue Smoke, 150-foot stretch, and it's an eyesore because there's no bushes or anything. It's just fence. So if you, I would encourage you to look at that because I just don't understand why someone can have it and other ones can't have it. But they're good neighbors, and they have a, they've, they've, their property is now one of the best landscapes in our street. And they just want to finish it off, and they haven't had the ability to even use their pool for the whole summer because of this issue. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? I hereby close the public hearing. Counsel?
Mayor, it's a, it's a pool. It needs to be private. And I know they're trying to keep Mr. Prebor from relieving himself out there on the tee box. So I have absolutely no objection to it.
Ted, thanks, Mike, yeah.
You're welcome.
Ted, what was it that started in like 1993, and after 20 years of deed restrictions, they, did they go away? Or what, expand on that?
Trying to remember. I think there was a statute that made them automatically renew after the statute that was passed in 93. So if the restrictions were pre-93, then the restrictions would go away unless all interested parties signed off on continuing them. If they were adopted 93 or after, or whenever that law went into effect, then they automatically renewed, is the general provision.
All right, thank you. Yeah, so that's just kind of a, I have a question.
Sure, sure. Does that mean that, that this would be okay to put a six-foot fence in and not be in violation of the ordinance that's in place today because of what you just mentioned?
That's two different things.
Two different, please explain.
You have deed restrictions, which would be one set of regulations that apply to the property, and then you have city ordinances. The two are separate.
And does anything on their deed restriction give them the right to do this?
I have no idea.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a comment. Would you, the owner stand up, or you can answer it from your chair if you can speak.
Microphone, no, microphone, please.
I've gone out to take a look at that, and it looks like after you turn off Blue Smoke and you go down that side road, about a third of the fence, or maybe not quite that much, a good section of it's falling down. It would seem to me that if you're such good landscape people or want to keep things looking good, you would have fixed that fence before now.
Well, our goal was always to replace the fence, which is why we haven't repaired it. This has been ongoing for a few months now. Our original application, I don't remember the date we submitted it, but it was before summer. So we didn't at the time realize that it would be such an ordeal to fence our property.
Okay. And wouldn't a four-foot, and we're, we're talking about six foot versus four foot?
Yes.
I understand that, you know, not, I mean, I play that course too, and I have not relieved myself on your fence or in your area. But I would tell you that
We appreciate that.
Four-foot high would be as much of a recovery area, or at least I would, I think it would keep Phil Prebor out of there. But four-foot long aside where you're talking about?
So I think it's difficult to understand from what's being said, the orientation of the property. So the house faces Rolling Green, which is lovely quiet.
I wish I saw that.
Right, and then the pool is on the Blue Smoke Trail side, and then the golf course runs behind the house. So obviously, we don't want to see any part of the golfers when they're trying to relieve themselves on our property. But also, the important thing to us is the pool privacy. As Mr. Crofton said, the pool is elevated, the fence is down the grade slightly, so a four-foot fence will be negligible.
It's my understanding that when we originally applied for the fence, the reason it was kicked back was for the Blue Smoke side, not the golf course side. We're actually, we're in compliance on the golf course side, but it's the Blue Smoke side. That was the issue, where there's already an existing six-foot fence, and there, apparently it was built in 1982 when, when the pool was built. And at that time, Blue Smoke wasn't a through street. That was, we were kind of the end of Peachtree City there. So it was a lot more private at that time. So when we bought the house, there was that existing six-foot fence. It's falling down. It needs repair. A section of it had to come down when we were regrading the backyard, and now we just want to rebuild it. And it's, it's hard to understand the way it's being explained, but, you know, the pool, the house is on a hill, so the pool is built on level with the house, and then the land comes down at least six feet, and then that's where the, where the fence is. So, you know, even a six-foot fence is sort of right at the limit of privacy for us, you know, minimum.
I thought one of the reasons is when you're sitting on that side road, if you had it too tall, it would kind of block the vision of the driver trying to pull out onto Blue Smoke. I mean, it seemed to me that that would be one of the concerns that a traffic engineer might have. But as we drove around there, it became clear that you could get out onto Blue Smoke whether it was four feet or six feet.
Right. And we left, you know, we definitely left right of way there from, from the street back to make sure that doesn't happen.
Okay, thank you. Answered my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for Robin. Is there anything preventing a six-foot, the currently six-foot privacy fence across the back? Is there anything in our current ordinance that prevents a six-foot solid privacy fence across the back?
No, ma'am. They would be able to do that along the golf part. It's the part, portion of their lot that faces a road. That's the issue.
Two, two roads.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, two roads. I'm, I'm a stickler for the ordinances. I, I believe that our ordinances have been in place for, what, 35 years now? Our new, new fence ordinance has been in place for about 35 years. I, I think a four-foot fence with 50% opacity is, is reasonable and in keeping with our ordinance. So that's my position on the matter. Anybody else want to comment?
Yeah, so this fence has been there since 1982. It sits way back from the road. The intent is to make it so that drivers can see, emergency vehicles can get in and out without having, without having to worry about not being able to see cars or something. This one sits way off the road. And I mean, it's, and it's been like that for, what's that, 40 years? So I, I really don't see a problem with it now. When you say a privacy fence, I like to see a decorative privacy fence. I know the fence that the gentleman was talking about on Blue Smoke, that's just the, the least expensive boards you can get from Home Depot with a dog ear on the top. I'd like to see something fancier, just because it is in such a view. I don't know if they'd be willing to do that or not. But at the end of the day, I think the pool, the way it faces, and as far as that sits off the road, I don't think it's an issue. And that's what, you know, a variance, that's what they're here for, is a variance on all ordinances.
When you say you don't think that's an issue, that I don't understand which way you're going.
I'm in favor of allowing them to put up the fence.
Can we ask one question? Why is it allowed on one side of the, of Blue Smoke and not on the other?
Any, any portion of a yard, any portion of fence along a public road, if it's between a road and a house, has to be four feet tall. That's just the way the ordinance is written. But any other property, if it's not facing a road, it can be up to six feet.
So that's on the golf course side. They can, they can have six foot.
That's not what you're asking. In fact, you're talking about the other one on Blue Smoke, correct?
The one on Blue Smoke that the gentleman said is, goes.
Oh, I've already sent an email to code enforcement. They will go and take a look tomorrow.
That fence has been there, that fence has been there a long time. It's a double lot.
Let's, let's stick to the issue here. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have some comments and questions. If I understand this right, and Ted or Robin, you may be able to answer it. Two of the sides, the side between the house and the next lot over, and between the house and the Flat Creek Country Club, those will all be six-foot fence. So we'll give them the privacy, particularly for their young daughters, for any of the issues that may be happening along the, the golf course. Phil, take a point on that one. Make sure you don't do anything there. But on the other, the other two sides, because the ordinance does say four feet and 50%, my, my impression on that is, from my own personal experience, I've had swimming pools, I have young daughters, and we put up a four-foot fence, and it worked just fine on the same kinds of ordinances. And we were in New York State at that time. So I don't really have a problem with two six-foot fences and two four-foot fences on the four different sides, and that would be my position on this.
So you would deny the variance request for six?
For six all the way around.
And solid. It's two issues.
Yep.
It's the height and the opacity, if you.
Right.
Yeah. Mr. Distia? Thoughts?
My, my thought was that, I don't know, I, I understand how it slopes down. That four-foot would be a distraction, or at least people could look over the top of it. But I think it would satisfy most of their problem along the golf course side. And I thought that the problem was in the front where Blue Smoke traffic would be, or people would, I'm in favor, like you are, that we ought to continue with our ordinances and not make too many changes all the time when we have the ordinances. So I guess I would be in favor of what, what Clint is talking about, four, six on one side, four on the other.
Ma'am, is that something, something that home on it?
They don't need a variance for the six feet along the rear of the property and on the adjacent property.
No, sir.
So the only variance they need are the portions facing a public road.
Yes, sir.
And those are the only variances they're seeking tonight.
Yes, sir.
For the two sides. So can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion on, let me get the right number, on item 0923-02, variance for 100 Rolling Green to allow privacy fence in the front yard. My motion would be to deny.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second for the denial. All in favor of the denial, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
Motion denied 3-2. Thank you.
Public hearing, 923-03, annexation and rezoning for 52 acres located at the end of Stagecoach Road and along Spear Road from unincorporated Fayette County. AR zoning to Peachtree City ER and LUR. Robin Caillou.
Thank you. When we get the PowerPoint presentation up, we will have a couple of graphics to, there we go. If we could turn down the lights, you're already on it. Thank you so much. So as a reminder, this is the step two, and this is the public hearing for the step two annexation request. Rezoning happens at the same time. The property is outlined in blue on the aerial photograph that you see above, before you. The area to the left or the west of that hot pink line is in Peachtree City. The area to the east is in unincorporated Fayette County. They would like to annex into Peachtree City. So let me please orient you. This is the plan that they have submitted. This is Spear Road that runs along here. This is the new middle school. Stagecoach Road is here. It goes all the way up to Robinson, which then 54. So they would like to annex the property into the city and have it rezoned into two different zoning districts. The first one, the area to the left or to the west of the Camp Creek Tributary, they would like to rezone to ER, a state residential. They are proposing two lots, but I do want to make notice that they would be allowed up to four lots in the ER zoning district. And then on the other side of the Camp Creek Tributary, they'd like to rezone about 39, 40 acres of it into 21 individual, single-family lots that are served by this Stagecoach Road extension and an internal road. This lot down here, although it does face Spear Road, would have driveway access up to this internal road, would not access Spear Road. To orient you for the area, it is, again, there's that city boundary in the red here. And on the left, we have zoning in the city. We have a state residential where the school is located and along Spear Road and even parts of Carriage Lane. And then we have LUR, which has a limited, limited-use residential with the smallest lot size of one and a half acre. And then in the county, it is currently zoned AR, which has a five-acre minimum lot. And it's adjacent to an R72, which is a two-acre minimum lot. We have future land use plan map for the property on the left side. Obviously, we, we don't have extratouristitional planning power, so we're just showing what the county has already adopted. For the future land use for this property is rural residential three, which means a three-acre lot, minimum size. And they've highlighted an area they, they have called environmental. It's just an area that they want to notify residents that they're along major streams and that there will be some environmental property. and that there will be some environmental properties in there. It's not a zoning district per se. And then in the city, right nearby, we've got single-family low. That is the lowest-density residential zoning district we have in the city. A little bit of single-family medium. And then, of course, community services for the church and the school and the church and the cemetery up there. Reminder that the property is not located within the area that was adopted as part of the 2014th growth boundary study. This is the general location of the property. The areas shown in color are the areas that were identified in that 2014 growth study. The annexation process, there has to be at least 30 days given notice to the county for them to object. They voted on their August 24th meeting to not object to the annexation. And their staff provided us comments, particularly that we've carried forward into staff recommendations, about an opportunity to possibly extend Stagecoach Road to Ebenezer Road. Now, I know that sounds like a very dramatic statement. This is just, if it should ever happen, let's plan for it so that we don't have any kind, we don't create any kind of problems for that in the future. So when we do an annexation, or when we receive a step two annexation, we're asked to, their staff is asked to analyze the impacts on public services and compare it to the comprehensive plan policy, and to look at budget impacts. So the first thing of those three, are the impacts on public services. Fayette County will provide the water. They are county department, and they provide water, have water accessible to the property. There's no public sewer proposed, in fact, they would prefer to do a private septic on each individual lot. We have requested police, the Peachtree City Police and the fire and EMS departments to comment, and they provided a comment that annexation of the property would not impact their ability to provide high-quality services to this area or the remainder of Peachtree City. Then the other public service that the city provides is roads and roads maintenance. And what I'd like to highlight here in the dark black is their proposed road system. Taking that city, or that county comment, we would like them to essentially rotate that Stagecoach Road to their northern property line, stub it out to the edge of their property line, and then have a neighborhood road off of that. Whole idea here is that if in 100 years from now, the adjacent properties develop, and the county, whether it's in the county or the city, and the county wants to extend Stagecoach Road out to Ebenezer or Davis Road, they could do so without having single-family lots fronting on that road. We're fortunate in Peachtree City, we have a strong development ordinance, so that if they are annexed into the city, they would be required to provide these roads at their cost, and not at the cost of the public. They would have to be built to our city standards, as do the paths that they're proposing. The path they've got shown up here, maybe a little bit difficult, but essentially it would, it runs across the creek here and on to Stagecoach Road and into the school where we now have a new path along Stagecoach Road. Now we're switching to that other area that we look at, is the analysis of the request on our comprehensive policies. Staff has identified three areas of comprehensive policies that are impacted by the request. Because this is a residential-only proposal, many of the, like, economic development in those types of policies don't apply. However, we have a strong policy in the city that all environmentally sensitive areas shall be platted separately from individual residential lots. And then either you'll see some of the older neighborhoods, that's actually, that environmental land has been dedicated and maintained by the city. And some newer parts of the city, it's actually owned and maintained by the HOA. But nonetheless, it's not incorporated into individual lots. It is pulled out and maintained, and that's a way to permanently protect and preserve that environmental land. So they are not, at this point, proposing to do that. The actual plan shows the environmentally sensitive land being incorporated into a portion of the lots, and then a portion of it is actually separated out as an individual area. They have said in their narrative that they would be willing to consider doing that. And so we just wanted, staff just wanted to highlight what that would do to the lots. So it would, in some lots, it would have absolutely no impact, but in others, you would see a good portion of that lot would be pulled out, and therefore, the remainder of that lot would be far lower than the average lot size, which they now have at 1.8 acres. It would be lower than that. The other policy that we look at is that land use and development pattern. None of this property is located within a village center, and so it is appropriate to have low-density residential outside of that village center. Our lowest-density future land use category maxes out, so to speak, at a one-acre size. So we don't have a future land use category that recommends three acres or five acres. We specifically say one acre or larger. And so this proposal does meet that intent, or that land use designation. However, the lot sizes within the city, staff would note that the smaller lot sizes nearby, the smallest is about 1.5 acres. The other policy that we looked at is housing. It may seem a little bit, like we're getting a little bit of the horse in front of the cart, or maybe the cart in front of the horse here, but it's important to bring up because this is our opportunity to implement this policy. The policy we have is to encourage housing type, particularly that encourages aging in place and multi-generational and working from home and whatnot. And so staff recommends that if we do, if you do recommend approval or have approval of this, that there be a condition that the homes contain a ground-level bedroom. This is a common tool used for aging in place, so that folks can have a stepless or a lower number of steps on their daily routine, so that they can continue to live in their homes, if they're able to. And that should include a bathroom as well. And then the final thing that we look at is the budget impacts. This is where we do an annual update, our, kind of, we have a land use impact model that's based on the budget, and we figure out how much a single-family home, on average, it costs the taxpayer to provide public services to that home. And the fiscal year, the most recent one, is $1,379 per dwelling unit per year, which is, if you were to recoup that in property taxes alone, would be a fair market value of $570,407. The applicant has said that these homes will be on par with the homes that were built in Hyde Park, Phase One. And we, staff looked at those and came up, the average home value in that neighborhood is $1 million. So we did three impact or budget analysis here. The first one being, if it were to remain, as it currently is right now, undeveloped, this is its current tax impact. And you can see, there's the school, fire, the county fire, the county EMS, the joint 911 county base taxes in the city. If they were to develop in the county, as it's currently planned for, they would still have to go through rezoning, but planned for, of those three-acre lots at $1 million, this is their tax, annual tax generation. And then if they were to develop as proposed, 23 lots, around $1 million apiece, you would see, because when they come annex into the county, I'm sorry, when they annex into the city, some of those taxes go away, but some do not. The county still gets their share, and then the city's share is about $55,000, maybe $56,000 a year. The Planning Commission held their public hearing on their August 14th meeting, sorry. And here, reviewed the minutes, and here are the categories of comments made by folks who attended the meeting. Generation of traffic and impacts, particularly on the signal at Highway 54 and Carriage Lane. Somebody noted that there was no pedestrian sidewalks in Carriage Lane. There was concern about density of the proposed development compared to the surrounding area. And there were folks who were concerned that the property around this property may develop, if this one were to develop. So after that public hearing, they voted unanimously to recommend denial to you all at that meeting, and as I'll do tonight. Staff recommended conditions that are included in your staff, in the memo that you have, but are summarized here. Should you approve this, we would like to see some conditions that preclude any residential homes facing or fronting on Stagecoach Road, that those environmentally sensitive lands be platted separately, and either deeded to a nonprofit, such as Southern Conservation Trust, an HOA, or the city. That there be a 50-foot landscape buffer on Spear Road. And that there would be a maximum number of 21 lots in the LUR zoning district with a minimum lot size of one acre. And that those lots' widths and setbacks should conform to the ER zoning, which is 100 feet on a lot front edge, and 50-foot setbacks, and 15 side, and 30 rear. And that the home be composed of low-maintenance siding, such as cementitious siding, brick or stone. And that the architectural details be on all sides facing a public road. This is a standard zoning condition in LUR. And that all homes have one, at least one ground-level bedroom and bathroom. Happy to answer any questions, and I believe the applicant is here tonight.
Let's, let's go ahead. Would the applicant like to add any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Rick Lindsey, here representing the applicant. I'm representing Hyde Park Properties, company owned by Mike and Michael Hyde. They've been long-term residents of Peachtree City, I believe. Mike Hyde Senior has lived here since the 70s, probably a lot longer than most anybody else in the room, and Michael, I understand, was born and raised here. They own a business here, so they have a vested interest in making sure Peachtree City remains the quality place that it is. They are the developers of Hyde Park, which, again, million-dollar homes. As Robin stated earlier, we're seeking approval of the step two annexation. It is about 52 acres. There'll be 23 lots. Each of the lots will be, well, except for the ER side and the LUR side, a little less than two acres. Some of them will be two acres, a little more, which, again, is about the same size as the lots that are immediately south, that are out in the county. All of those were originally two acres, or maybe just a little more than two acres. One lot actually bought some property from the Davis family years ago, and is now just a little over three acres. But all of those are about two, so this is really about the same size as those lots. As Robin stated, the lots on the west side of the creek will be developed as ER, three-acre minimums, and the LUR on the other side, 21 lots. As Robin stated, the applicant is willing to dedicate the property to a nonprofit or to the city. They have discussed this with Southern Conservation Trust. The board of Southern Conservation Trust hasn't taken a formal vote because nothing has happened yet, but they have met with the entire board. The board is excited about this property. It would be a little more than 12 acres of the environmentally sensitive property that would be dedicated to Southern Conservation Trust. So if the annexation takes place, the next thing that will happen is that we will have a meeting with Southern Conservation Trust and then dedicate those 12 acres to them. The homes in the entire development will become a part of the Hyde Park and Kensington Gardens HOA. As Robin stated, there is a multi-use path that is already planned and will cross the creek. Both the path and all the roads, the extension of Stagecoach, will be built to city standards. The houses that are going to be built here will be high-end. As Robin stated, they're going to all be million-dollar, million-dollar-plus homes. Currently, the city doesn't have any lots of this size that is set aside for residential development. All the lots in the city right now that are currently available for sale or development are far less than, than an acre. These are all going to be, like I said, two acres or approximately of that size. Even after the dedication of the environmentally sensitive property, each of the lots will be at least an acre. Most of them will not be impacted at all by the dedication of the property to Southern Conservation Trust, and will be approximately two acres, as I've stated. We understand that Southern Conservation Trust also wants to continue working with Booth Middle School for its project adventures and other similar nature-oriented programs. And like I said, the board is excited about getting these 12-some-odd acres and protecting that property. The city has talked with, about stubbing out Stagecoach Road to the north. Robin, if you could go back to that slide, please. Do you know which one I'm talking about? That one. Our proposal is not to do that, to not give the appearance that Stagecoach is going to continue on into the county. We would prefer, Robin, if you go to the next one, I believe, that the development look like this, and so that it's evident that the proposed development is simply adding these 23 lots, or really the 21 on the other side of the creek, into Peachtree City, and not a gateway, if you will, into the county and additional land being brought into the county for development. As Robin stated, there were citizens who spoke at the Planning Commission meeting that they were concerned about the traffic going on to Stagecoach and Carriage. That's why we would prefer to have this, where there is no access to Spear Road. There is no planned access out into the county. We're really, again, just talking about 23 lots. So we would prefer to have this design, if that would be the wish of the city council. When we went before the Board of Commissioners back on August 24th, I believe the comment from Commissioner Maxwell was, well, this is a no-brainer. And they made no conditions on extending Stagecoach out into the county, and they voted unanimously not to object to the proposed annexation. I believe in the Planning Commission, there were also some comments from some of the citizens that there were these two 50-foot street easements that are in the property. These are not to be paved. That's not what's being proposed. The property that's to the east and to the north of my client's property is owned by the Davis family. The Davis family has told my client on multiple occasions, they have no interest in developing or coming into the city. Now, I know things can change and whatever else, but that is not the plan. The, the reason for the 50-foot easements here, again, is if something happens many years down the road, of course, they take the city to allow it to come in or development to attach, is that it's good planning to say, all right, here's some area where if you want to put a street, you could put a street. But it did not reduce the number of lots that were available for development here. And if it never gets developed, which is what we believe will happen, you just end up having a 50-foot, additional 50-foot buffer or whatnot on the sides of those two, probably four, lots in the development. There is a deed restriction in the, in the property that was purchased by my client, the very last one, that goes down to Spear, that this property cannot connect to Spear and to Stagecoach. And that really benefits what we want to do on the property, and that's not to create another, maybe mini Planterra, where people are cutting through. So our proposal is only to attach to Stagecoach Road and, and direct all the traffic in that direction. If the annexation takes place, it gives the city the opportunity to mold and shape the development of this property. As Robin has stated, all the development will have to be done to city standards. If it's out in the county, it will be done to county standards. If it is not annexed, my client is ready to develop. He's owned the property, some of it, for 28 years. When he purchased the great bulk of the property, it was land use planned for one unit to two acres. So if it's not annexed, our next step will be to go to the county for development. We will ask for one unit to two acres, as that was what it was purchased as. And I believe with the development that's just south there, along Spear Road, and the size of those lots, that the county will grant that. If the county does grant that, it's going to be probably 26, maybe 25 houses that will be built on this property. We don't have to do the ER. If it's in the county, we don't have to dedicate the environmentally sensitive areas to a nonprofit, or to the county, or to an HOA. So those would just be included with the, with the lots, kind of as shown up here in the purple. And so Southern Conservation Trust will lose the ability to protect the 12- And so Southern Conservation Trust will lose the ability to protect the 12 acres, and it'll be up to the landowners whether or not they want to continue their projects, the project adventure at Booth Middle School. As I believe we heard in the Step One annexation hearing from both the fire chief and the assistant police chief, Peachtree City, right now, would provide emergency services to this area, whether it's in the county or in the city, under the automatic aid agreements that are in place between Peachtree City and the county. So if it stays in the county, it's going to develop anyway. It's not going to stay wooded. It's going to develop. So the question really here is, does the city council want to control and mold and shape the development of this property? Do we want the environmentally sensitive areas to go to Southern Conservation Trust so they can have educational programs out there and protect the land? Does the city want the property taxes that will be generated by this development, or not have any of the taxes and still be under the automatic aid requirements where police and fire will still be going out and servicing this property? So we believe that the annexation has a positive impact on the city. It's going to bring those tax dollars in. It provides a housing option that does not currently exist, large lots, expensive homes. I would ask that, we have no problem with most of the homes, and maybe all of them will end up with a bedroom, one bedroom and one full bath on the lower floor, but I'd ask that maybe give us some wiggle room, and say maybe 3/4 or 80% of the lots have to have that, just in case somebody doesn't want to have the main, a bedroom on the main floor. But again, that's not, if that's what council wants, that's okay. I'm just asking for some wiggle room on that. But again, we believe that this would be a positive impact to the city. It's going to develop. It's time, it's prime. Now that the school is there, Stagecoach Road has been paved, it is time for this property to develop. And for those reasons, we are requesting that the annexation be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I will open the public hearing. First of all, I'd like to see a show of hands of those who would like to speak in favor. I'm going to take a bit of a head count. In favor? All right, sir? You can go ahead and take the microphone. I see one.
Hi. I'm the same moment of Longboat. It looks like, over the past decade or so, there's been a lot of development inside of Peachtree City, but most of all, these developments have been either less than a quarter acre, or a half acre of land. Everything's sort of close together, everywhere you go, especially along Macduff Parkway, Smokerise Corners, the new Mills Farms that's happening, and even Townsend Village. Everything's all close together. There's nothing available that you can get with more than an acre of land. This proposed plan sounds like it will be allowing custom homes on large lots, so it looks like about 1.8 acres. So that would allow more housing options to be added into Peachtree City, and we have not had that opportunity for a long time. And this would also match the surrounding areas, like the subdivision in Hyde Park. With working from home being common nowadays, having a house with a good-sized office, having a good-sized backyard for kids to play, and having a bedroom, like we've been talking about, on the main floor for aging in-laws or elderly, and then the ability to pass on this house for multi-generational families would be perfect. As a resident of the county for all my life, 30 years, 38 years, and I plan on growing my kids here, this sounds like something that would be really good for Peachtree City, and has been really difficult to find lately. So since this development process proposes different housing options that is needed, not only in Peachtree City, but as a nation, because we're really short on housing for this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Can I get a show of hands of those who wish to speak in opposition? I'm going to take a head count. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13. We have a grand total of 10 minutes, so I would, I see-
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Certainly.
Is there a chance that we can extend that time for these people to a little bit more than whatever that time would come out?
Sure.
Divide it out, maybe two minutes, three minutes, if possible, per person?
Let's listen to the options here. So the way that the ordinance works, by majority vote, you all could extend the time, but the time would be divided by both sides.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we extend the time allotted to the persons on both sides. There was 11 total, is that right?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Two minutes apiece, so that's 26 minutes?
Maximum.
You would have to save 40, because you would have to divide the time by two, by both sides.
Say that again, please.
You would have to increase it, because you would have to-
To 52 minutes.
Correct.
Thirty-five seconds.
Because the time divides by two.
Because that involves both sides.
Correct. Equally divided by both sides.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
It's been a short meeting.
We have determined there is, is there anybody else who wishes to speak in favor? Thank you. Now, for those who wish to speak in opposition, let's give them one minute to divide the time.
Just want to confirm, the motion was for 52 minutes, correct?
Yes.
So that'd be 26 minutes divided by the number of people, correct?
Correct.
26 minutes.
26 minutes. Are you ready, Stephen? All right, the first person can come up to the microphone, and let's be careful to stick to the issue, and to not repeat other people's comments, and we'll have the first person up to the microphone, please.
Well, in this case, I'm not going to let the lady get up first. Bob Grove, Lakeside Subdivision, 42 years in the city. Most of this I'm going to be talking about is where it's going to be located, and the limited access of getting to it and out of it. I haven't heard anybody say anything about the year or so of building over there. How are they going to get the bulldozers in, the cement trucks in, the lumber trucks in, Stagecoach by the school? Now, I'm going to give you some numbers on the school. Most of you are a little, about my age. If you've taken any kids into school over there, you'll see me, because I'm at the four-way stop. If you don't see me, you're in the wrong place. Right now, on, this is based on weather, an average day, like today, and this is in the school and out of the school, AM and PM. You're talking about 400 cars. The same day, with school buses, it's in the morning in, the morning out, PM in, PM out, 72 school buses. Everything is handled twice. Now, you're talking about going along that road with houses up there and people coming out there. Now you've got to have them end up on Robinson Road. I've got one of my fellows in here that works Robinson. He damn near gets killed every day. And he got backups, morning and afternoon, because you're emptying out on what street? 74. If you go Carriage Lane, where's it end up at? 74, or, excuse me, 54. At 54 and Carriage, you've also got Walt Banks. That's an accident looking for a place to happen, and it's already happened. You've got heavy traffic. The school buses are split, half down Stagecoach, half down Carriage Lane. Construction equipment, like I said, how are you going to get it there? It's got to come past the school on Stagecoach. We just built a million-dollar-plus house right across the street from the school. 10 months it took to build that place, and we were backed up with construction traffic cutting off half the road. I called the PD several times to have the contractors move the stuff out of the way. The school buses couldn't get in, the people couldn't get out, the parents. You've got a lot more things to look at to just than having a new tax base up there on the hill. Stagecoach wasn't built to handle that kind of traffic, because, again, it empties on Robinson Road, which is a very, very busy thoroughfare. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Mayor, I do want to provide some clarification. You all voted on an additional 26 minutes, so it's 36 minutes in all.
Got it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lynn Froh in Peachtree City, and I just want to say that our city council government is authorized to perform certain functions as listed in the general info on the Peachtree City website. Of the nine items listed, none say anything about being allowed to annex new property outside the city limits, especially since the planning commission rejected this annex. It's not feasible in accordance with the Peachtree City plan, which I must add, has all but disappeared in the rush to overdevelop Peachtree City. This planned annex will, as he said, disaster for the school, and it's a danger zone for a school zone, and that's, the planning commission understands that, it's very poor planning. They are, I just want to reiterate about the planning commission, they are useful to assist Peachtree City Council in making good, sound decisions for our city. So my question is, why is the Peachtree City Council, even considering this annex, vote as a viable option? It was already rejected by the planning commission members, and that's your advisory board, your board of expertise. And then, after seeing his presentation, I was really upset about the sensitive land issue, and that seems kind of like to been skipped over, and I just feel like the staff of recommendations are a little bit of a flim-flam. I heartily oppose this.
Thank you. Next, please.
I'm Larry Manwaring, and you all have a rare opportunity this evening, and that is to increase the value of your property, and my property, and the property of everybody here in Peachtree City. All you have to do is to vote against this proposal. Now, why do I say that? Well, it would reinforce the fact that Peachtree City believes in strong, controlled zoning, and we uphold those zones. If you look at this plan carefully, you'll find that, really, this is, this is not another plan to develop an area that is a Hyde Park area, because those lots are all two-plus acres. These, if you subtract the flood plain and the creek and that sort of area, you end up with one-acre lots. And they're surrounded by three-acre, two-acre, four-acre, five-acre lots. It's inconsistent zoning, and people want to move to Peachtree City because they are looking for good, solid zoning, and a commitment to the people. So I urge you, agree with the planning commission, which unanimously voted against this, and thereby you'll improve the value of your property and mine, and everyone else's here, and you'll avoid this horrendous traffic problem. That is, oh, there's one other big thing I need to point out. Would you go back to the map that had the yellow section, the comprehensive plan map? Okay, you see that area there? Originally, when the school was talking about developing, they were talking about developing not one school, but two. Two schools, a middle school and an elementary. And isn't it interesting that an elementary school generally has 10 plus a little more acres? The reason, there's reasons for that, that we don't have time to go into, but it's interesting that that's a 13-acre plot there. Don't be surprised if they come back to you, or, they wouldn't have to come to you, would they? They could drop it in there. And they have been in negotiation with Mr. Hyde to buy that property for a school, but the negotiation fell through. Don't be surprised if we end up with two schools there, and twice the traffic problem to get through the school area. And the other thing, that those open areas at the end of the cul-de-sacs are going to remain an enticement for further development. Now, you combine all that, further development, and an extra school, and you've got some problems. Let's avoid those. Let's-
Sir?
-increase the value of our property.
Thank you. Next, please. No, no. Excuse me, excuse me. We have a lot to do, and we want to hear from everybody.
My name is Kelly Rains, and I am a resident of Carriage Lane. Sorry. I bought my four-acre lot in Peachtree City. I chose it in this planned, supposedly, city, surrounded by other estate residential properties. Well, in the time that I've been there, Mike Hyde has extended our street, and I'm not saying that Hyde Park is not gorgeous, it really is, but, you know, the original plan for that would have had more than twice as many homes as it actually ended up getting. So I watched that go in and get slipped by. It didn't have to be estate residential like it was supposed to be. Then the next thing, the school board comes and literally tears down the house across the street from me. Boom, there was a whole house gone, and they replace it with a road, and then they add a school. Have you ever, have you all come down to Carriage Lane? Have you all checked it out? Have you all seen it? This is a, this is a narrow, windy, kind of hilly road in areas. There are blind spots, there are trees really, really close to the road. It is horrible. I live a half a mile down the road. Do you know, that light, you can wait three, four times for that light to change. The traffic will be backed up from the light, all the way past my driveway, a half mile down, and all the way up to the school property. We cannot have any more cars and traffic on this road. It is just not feasible. It makes no sense whatsoever. And we sure don't need one-acre lots in an area that's supposed to be estate residential and agricultural residential. When is it going to stop? It just keeps going more and more and more. I hope you can be as much of a stickler for this annexation and this rezoning as you just were for a four-foot fence. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
John Dufresne, Preston Chase. They're proposing septic systems. The city sewer use ordinance states, "No septic tank or other subsurface disposal facility shall be installed where a public service sewer is accessible to the premises involved." Shall is mandatory. By city ordinance, shall is mandatory. This property is adjacent to Booth. I believe Booth has sewer. Septic is unacceptable in this case.
Thank you. Next, please.
Suzanne Brown, I live in Crescent Oak. First of all, I find that the comment that, if this is not annexed, that they're not going to make, or they're not going to preserve the environmentally sensitive area, I find that comment absolutely reprehensible. Either you're in favor of the environment, or you're not. The narrative that was presented in the packet clearly indicates that this has been the first step, or this is the first step, in many, several future land purchases within the delineated contiguous landlots, 61 and 68, and it clearly, the subject property's part of a very long-range plan and not of a speculative nature. Well, I have a problem with all of that. Make no mistake, this is a big plan. He has a legal right to ask for you to annex this into the city. He does have that right, but he also has the right to develop it the way it is, the way he purchased it, within the county guidelines. Let him do that. Why does he want to be annexed? Well, he can build nine more houses at a million dollars or more per house. That's a lot of, or, excuse me, as $100,000 more per house, he's going to make more than a million dollars more if you annex than if you don't. It's in his best interest. It's not in ours. His narrative clearly states that his intention, states his intention, "But if you are skeptical, look closely at the site plan and notice those roads that he has building or easements to vacant property clearly shows he's leaving that certainly open for possibilities. Unless you plan to build there later," remember, he said, "Guidelines were carefully crafted with the anticipation of several future land purchases." The three properties owned by Nora Davis add up to 187 acres. The three properties owned by Nora Davis add up to 187 acres. 187. One is five acres, one is 73 acres and one is 110 acres. How many houses are going to go in on that property? Another issue is that this plan speaks about his commitment to protecting the Camp Creek watershed and like Mr. Dufresne just said, if you really want to protect the watershed, you would connect to the sewer system. You would not put septic systems in that are going to fail in 20 to 25 years. Think about the fact that in another five or 10 years, what would be built? It's not just a one-and-done thing. We've seen city councils over the last 30 years, as we look back, make decisions and they come back to haunt us. They rezoned Plantera
Your time has expired.
And we now have a property, or a traffic problem in Plantera. Think about what you're doing and deny this.
Thank you, next.
Hi, I'm Royce Roland.
Pull that microphone up, just a little bit.
I live on Carriage Lane and it was about a year and a half ago, everything was railroaded through for that school, including all the traffic we got. It is exactly like Kelly said. It backed up, I can't even get out of my driveway, all right? So I'm going to just repeat and iterate what she said in that it's not a one-time, one-person only situation. The other thing is also like she said, all of that was estate residential. That was all supposed to be estate residential, even the Hyde Park existing right now. If this goes through at less than two and a half to three, I mean, my property has to be 3.8 acres. Everything else does, hers, all of them. But all of a sudden, this is going to be much less and more people, more problems? Thank you.
Thank you, next.
Hi, my name is Noreen Perret and I live on Carriage Lane. And I know you spoke a few minutes ago, the question was asked if you had driven down Carriage Lane or driven down in that area before, but I'm wondering if you've driven down in that area in the morning when the school buses are in line or when the parents are bringing their children to school or in the afternoon when parents are coming to pick up their children? The one thing that I always worried about right from the beginning with the traffic was safety. And my 89-year-old mother lives with me back in the end of Carriage Lane and I love my mother more than life itself. And I had to take my mother to urgent care one morning and unfortunately, it was during the time that school was going to be in session. And I sat at that light and sat at that light and my heart beat faster and faster and faster because I couldn't get my mother past that light to get her to urgent care. And that wasn't the worst of it. I have a 17-year-old son who just started driving a year ago and my son was almost killed out on 54 in Carriage Lane because of the traffic. And I know that people have talked about how busy the traffic is on Carriage Lane or Stagecoach or Robinson, but I'm not quite sure if you have children in your family or elderly parents that live with you that have to deal with it or elderly parents that live with you that could be a life or death situation to try to get your mother from 203 Carriage Lane to urgent care down in Fayetteville when you didn't know if you were going to make it or not. And so all of the building is great and I think it's wonderful that we provide living in families, the homes for families that want to move to Peachtree City. I think it's wonderful. But at the end of the day, if we don't have a council that is concerned about the safety of our families, does all the building really matter? Thank you.
Thank you, next please.
Hello, I'm Ronnie Rains, 109 Carriage Lane. And everything they said is true. I mean, if you come there during, during the busy season of morning or afternoon, it is bad traffic.
Could you pick up the microphone, please?
Can you hear me? Okay, sorry. Anyway, the traffic problem is really bad and it makes no sense to allow somebody to put smaller lots when it's not necessary. I mean, the land is there, it's going to be developed. Why don't you just develop it larger lots? I don't believe annexing it into the city is our best interest because it's going to bring more traffic. I worry about what's going to happen if he does build and you don't annex it. Either way, can they connect that road? Is that, is that possible? So anyway, I'm concerned about the traffic that's going to happen with or without the annexation. And I'm concerned that we're not going to, we're not going to get any, are they going to fix the traffic light at Carriage Lane and 54? If you've ever driven that when it's school season, you will see that everybody's, put on your blinker. If you put on your blinker, we'll note that you're going to take a left or a right, but there's a stall. So now you've got another 50 cars back behind you waiting to go because this guy couldn't put on his blinker. That's just a common, everyday thing that we deal with. So if we object to this project, it's because we don't want to see any more traffic. I will say that he does a great job of building houses. The community that's next to us was supposed to be 19 homes. Can you imagine going into Hyde Park and seeing 19 homes there instead of the beautiful nine that you currently see? So to me, it wasn't necessary to put 19 homes. The nine homes worked out fine, but I don't think it was necessary to bring this to the city without just saying, you know, I'll build three-acre lots and then we'll annex. Why do you have to get smaller lots all the time? You know, a guy puts a road beside a school and next thing you know, the builder sees an opportunity to make more money by building more houses. And I'm, I'm just tired of the traffic and I know everybody else is too and I think that's what's going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, next please.
Hello, my name is Neha Shaw, I'm a resident of Carriage Lane. I echo everything that has been said and just to say something a little bit different. I was hoping that the development of Stagecoach would help reduce the traffic on Carriage Lane, it has not. I invite all of you to come have coffee and start your day at my house at seven o'clock in the morning and see if you can make it. And also come have afternoon lemonade tea at 2:55. You will not get there until like 3:20. So I want you to, I love the reconnaissance that you did for the fence, so please come and live a day in the life of a resident on our street and spend the early morning and afternoons with us and also spend an afternoon with Crossing Guard Bob because he has almost gotten killed so many times. I see you in the morning and I praise God that you're there. So there's that. The other thing is myself and my physician, my husband, we're both physicians at Piedmont Fayette. My husband's a critical care doctor. He's had to try and leave during those time periods to go save a life in the ICU and has not been able to make it because of the traffic. So I think that's, is also a big impact and I'm sorry that happened to you, Noreen, but it's also for the people that are giving the care. We can't make it. I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you, next please.
I shouldn't be up here to speak, but I was actually threatened
Ma'am, I'm sorry, can you start with your name?
I'm Karen McKernan. I'm off of Robinson Road, Spear Road, close to Spear Road. But I was threatened by what he said. If we don't agree to the annexation, then the county's going to screw us over. It sounds like there needs to be a plan and you need to protect us and this is a threat. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, next please.
Hi, Brad Williams. I live on JC Booth driveway formerly known as Carriage Lane. And I'm here in opposition for a little bit different perspective. I share those of my neighbors who've already spoken, but I'm tired of empty promises, undelivered promises. Those are promises of infrastructure. Our, our city founders founded us on this idea of a, of a village, an accessible village. We don't share in that accessibility on our side of town. We don't have cart paths that connect, we can't get to Publix, we can't get to Lexington, we can't get to a lot of places because the infrastructure has not kept up with the development on our side of town. And if this is to be annexed, then you must invest in the infrastructure on our side of town. We need a beautiful bridge like you have on the other side of town to connect from north to south. We need connected sidewalks that don't go to nowhere right now, like 54 and Walt Banks where you have a sidewalk accessibility issue where you enter onto grass, no sidewalk. So if I'd like to go cross a street to the gym, I have to play Frogger and take my life into my own hands and attempt to get across the street. I'm not some middle-aged Gen Xer who's against change. If that were the case, I'd still like everything to be like the 80s, I'd still have a mullet, okay? I had short hair last year at this time. I'm not against change, but I am against broken promises and I want our side of the city to catch up with the rest of the city and make good on the promise of accessibility, including cart paths and sidewalks and everything else that the rest of the city benefits from. Thank you.
Thank you, next please. Hearing none, I hereby close the public hearing. Counsel. Who wants to go first?
Where do we start? I guess I could take it back to the, to the beginning of the Booth Middle School that kind of initiated this stuff. And right now, I look at this as the result of the law of unintended consequences because as soon as Stagecoach was to be paved, this generated itself. Whether or not this thing is approved today, it's going to be built and if it's built in the county, we're going to have traffic for 22 to 26 homes as Mr. Lindsey says. That's not going to change. But what scares me about this is the 107 acres or whatever it is that is just to the east of it and borders Ebenezer Road because there is absolutely nothing, nothing that would stop the owner of that property or whoever it is two years from now, five years from now, next week to come up and say, "I would like to develop my property in the county to county specs and connect in to this property which would take it to Stagecoach Road and we're going to have to eat the traffic." And at this time, those, Stagecoach Road is still private street, that hadn't changed yet. Plus, when the school board did this, they knew that Carriage Lane and Walt Banks was an unsafe intersection. It was, it was at the time classified as a C intersection that went to D minus and while Stagecoach was being, was yet to be paved, it was an F. That hadn't changed. And when the school board was approached by that in the discussions that I led, it's the city or the state's problem, it's not theirs. That's what we were left with. But here at night, I mean, I could pick seven, eight reasons to deny this thing, but I just want the city to know that this is coming, whether we approve this or not. That's all I've got to say.
Madam Mayor?
Sir?
Two quick comments. One was, as you know, that I was under Planning Commission for 11 years and the chairman for seven and you and I sat through the last review for the new, for the new members that we're hopefully going to pick up. I have a great appreciation for what they do. We have engineers, attorneys and other people on the Planning Commission, so I have a great deal of respect for the time they put into that. And I think it would be a travesty if we approve this and override their comments or their recommendation. That's one of my first comments, I agree with the people out there. The second comment is that several meetings now I've asked for, made comments to both the planning, excuse me, the manager, that I don't think we should do any more annexations until we have an annexation plan. And we've commented about that a couple of times. So my two concerns and why I would vote against it would be that the Planning Commission has recommended against it and we don't have yet an approved annexation plan.
Good, thank you. Yes.
You know, there's, there's a lot of good information from the citizens and this is tough. It's real tough because if we don't annex it, nothing's stopping the applicant from building homes and connecting right all the way to Spear Road? And you talk about a traffic nightmare, that, it's already a traffic nightmare. So how do we, how do we try to improve what is existing or, or prevent something from existing from the property that the, the number of lots that he could build in the county versus if it's city? Mr. Lindsey, how many is that? What's the difference?
Four or five, I think.
Yeah.
If it's developed one unit per two acre, it would be something just south of 26. If it's one unit to three acres, which is the current county's land use plan, it's 17 lots. So like I said, if we go into the county, we're going to ask for the one unit, two acres because that's what the land use plan was when the property was purchased.
And so we don't know what the county would, would do on that. I guess I'm just, you know, speaking out loud. You know, how do we, how do we make it and plan for a piece of property that's in the county to, I don't know what the answer is, I'm thinking out loud here. How do we make it so that, to me, it's not this, this section of property, it's the property on the other side, the hundreds of acres that go all the way to Spear Road and if, I don't want to say we don't annex it, even if we annex it, do we, how do we, how do we stop that from continuing on? I, I don't know, but it's, you know, it's certainly an issue. Annexed or not, that property could go through.
Well, if, if I could, Robin, would you put that, that land, that little map slide you had there?
At a minimum, Phil, we got to take
At a, at a minimum, what I would ask, if we annex this, instead of this property here that's shaded, whatever you want to call it, instead of dedicating it to the Southern Conservation Trust and especially this little slip of land right here, instead of dedicating it to someone, deed it to Peachtree City, then I've capped it at 22 homes or whatever that number is tonight. Period and I'm done.
Mr. Hollid.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What really has made Peachtree City what it is today? Number one, strong land planning. Number two, strong zoning adherence. Two very critical things for a planned community to do. So Madam Mayor, I, I can, I have a number of comments, it may take me a little while. I hope you defer a little bit of time for me on some of these. I won't, I won't blather on too much, but basically
I'll trust you, Mr. Hollid.
Thank, thank you. I have a real problem with the zoning. Whatever happened to ER? Everything around that and if you take a look at the plan that Robin had up there earlier, Madam Mayor, it was ER all around. What happened to that? Why was it, why did you come before us and want more houses there? I understand the reason why. I'm a businessman, I get it. It's all about the money. I understand making a profit because I was in it for many, many, many years. But in this case, we're talking about the actual property, the way it should be zoned, it should be an ER zoning. As some of the comments came in, they didn't have a problem with ER zoning. That's a three-acre lot. In that respect, I'd like to go over to the sewer side. Why isn't this a sewed system? They have sewers coming in there. Why would you hurt this beautiful land, this Camp Creek area? I mean, I'm looking at this and as an engineer, I look at this and go, what happened to the buffer sections? They're going to be building on those. They're going to be encroaching on them. These are supposed to have 100-foot buffers. What happened to them? On top of all that, I think that the mathematics on this, and I went through the math and I see the mathematics on the amount of, amount of land and if you take everything into account and remove all this slashed line, and Robin, could you put up the other one that's got a big section of environmental land? That one right there. You start taking away all of that land and what you have left in my calculations, I could be wrong, is 1.2 acres per lot. What happened to three? It went down from three where it was originally planned, down to 1.2. I don't particularly like that, but more importantly from a safety standpoint, it was brought up a number of times. I can honestly say, what's going to happen when they have, hopefully never happened, but if it happens, a lockdown at the school. Those streets are going to be cut off. The people that live in those areas have no way to get out in an emergency, they can't get out at all, you've got a lockdown, those streets are closed. Number two, oh my goodness, let's get somebody, and I think someone said this this in emergency, had to get to the hospital, and there was so much traffic, they couldn't get out. And now, you've got something even more serious. What happens if you get a call from one of those properties, "My husband or wife has had a heart attack. Get the emergency vehicles in here, please. It's 3:00 in the afternoon. There's lots of traffic there. How are we going to get in and rescue these people?"
So where are you heading with all this, Mr. Holland?
What I'm saying, where I'm heading, Madam Mayor, thank you very much for corralling me in on this one. I am definitely not in favor of this. I think it's the wrong place and the wrong amount. Now, if they want to look at this in the future, I'd say we should take a look at it in the future. But take a look at the strong zoning plans and the strong land planning of this city, and come back and talk to us at City Council.
So you bring up a lot of great points, but I am so concerned about if we, if we don't, right? Whether we do or not, that's not stopping all that traffic. You're not going to stop the, if we could figure out a way to limit it to this, right? Never mind the 100 acres that goes all the way to Ebenezer.
Right.
You know what I mean? And my concern is, is if, if-
I'm going to ask that we keep it quiet so we can hear on the audio for those at home.
If we don't annex, how do we stop the hundreds of acres?
Well, good point, Councilman Phil. I think Councilman Distadio said it's time we looked at a new land annexation plan for this city. And that may help us down the road, as you're talking about, to maybe look at what we need to do-
Yeah.
-to protect our city and protect our borders. And that would have to be in the new 2024 plan, assuming we do it in '24, because that particular property is not in the 2014 plan of annexation. I'm sure we all know that. So I don't know the answer to your question-
Yeah, I mean, I-
Other than I think we need to look at a good, long, if we're going to plan right with what we've got from strong land planning and zoning, we need to do it right and put a new plan together for '24.
Yes.
I agree with you. I agree with you, Clint. You need a plan, you know, and it needs to be solid enough to know where you want to go for five to 15 years or whatever you think you want to do it.
I look at the year 2050.
The point I want to make to you is, if you make the thing in 2024, nothing stops development.
Yeah.
It's going to happen.
Yeah.
And just what Mr. Prebor said, you're going to get the traffic. Because if you sit around and do nothing, whatever, it's going to come through. You can't stop it. Now, do we want to control it or not?
And that's why I think the '24, a new plan will help us in that respect.
It'll help you, but that's down the road. You haven't done it yet.
I understand that. I understand that.
That's just like when, back, this is several years ago, in Peachtree City, they did a, they tried to do a moratorium on building or developing anything, totally against, just totally against the law. Just didn't work.
The only way, the only way to stop this is for us to buy it, and we're not going to be able to buy this property.
No, I think we're getting a little off track.
I heard something else, and then, I mean, you know, this is a lot to think about I hadn't thought about. Mr. Manwaring brought up an elementary school. What if an elementary school goes in there, right? I mean, talk about traffic, right?
And safety.
And safety.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any other last comments? I have one I'm going to share. Do you want to go ahead, Mr. Prebor?
Well, I mean, I don't, you know, I just don't know if I've, I want to think about this some more, I guess, where I'm going.
In my, in my view, this, this particular project, this area, is not in our 2014 growth boundary study. I checked with some of our planning commission members on why would it be so resounding of a decline or of a denial from the planning commission. It's because this is not in the 2014 boundary study. I think that it's time that we move on this, but we need to come up with a good collective vision for the area, including traffic, before we can responsibly move forward. That's my position on the matter.
Thank you.
We need to do it. We need to move on it. Yes.
Can I just make a point of clarity? The applicant stated earlier that this property that's in the county is serviced by Peachtree City Fire and Police. It is not. And if it stays in the county, it would not be serviced by Peachtree City. There is not an automatic aid right now that exists that we service that property.
But it would be coming-
Thank you.
-because the only access to it will be off, off Carriage Lane onto Stagecoach.
Yeah.
Off Carriage Lane, I just, yeah.
Clint, is that true?
I'd like to ask the fire chief to explain that, please.
So the way that would work is the county would come into the city of Peachtree City and service that area using the roads. They do that all the time. They come from Tyrone to Brooks.
I fully understand that. However, you know, because it's in the county, as many times as not, they would ask if we have something available, would they not? No?
Not always. No, sir. They would, they would rather service it themselves. They, so they have a tendency of not doing that.
I agree with you. They would rather do it themselves, and there's a reason for that.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I really have an applicant, a question for the applicant. Mr. Lindsay, if you have a moment, it'll be, how can we stop, the biggest concern is the traffic, right? How, what can we do to make it so that we can stop the adjacent until that's come up with a plan or something that's, really, the traffic is the issue. I mean, it's, it's an issue since the school was done.
Please, excuse me.
The way this is designed, Phil, is that there is no paved road going to the Davis property, the 100 whatever acres that are over there. So it would take the city to approve a connection to this property. So this stops, which is one of the reasons why I said, let's not stub out Stagecoach to the northern end, because then it touches the Davis property, and there's no way to prevent a development going in, whether it's in the county or in the city and connecting. At this point, there are no shown, and there won't be any, paved roads going to the boundary. And so if the city wants to say, look, you know, we don't want any of that. Part of the condition is that you have to come back to the city for approval. That's already what it is right now, because there's nothing there. It would take approval of the city to change this, to put in roads, or to connect to annex or whatever that property is to the east and to the north.
Ted, do you agree with that?
With what?
But it would, that-
He said a lot, with this particular-
Ted, could you speak into the microphone, please?
You know, my concern is, is the, the property that is to the east. And so if there's an easement there, and then it would have to be up to a future city council to okay for that road to come through?
As it's shown right now, the road stubs out, and then you would have, I don't, I pulled up on my iPad what lot that is, but there would be no point of connection short of somebody acquiring that property going north. You've got lots to the right of that stubout, up at the top of the road, same thing down at the bottom.
So if the property to the right-
Here's your button here.
Thank you.
Okay.
The property right here decides they want to-
There does appear to be-
Come in, I'm going to go all the way over here, right? A property over here decides they want to come in, and they, does the city have to approve that connection right there?
City never has to approve an annexation. And in terms of the connection, it looks like there's a 50-foot street easement reflected on the lower stubout. Is that correct?
Right here?
Yep. Yes.
Shh.
If that easement was conveyed to the city, then there would be a connection that could be made there.
If, if a future council decided they wanted to do it. But otherwise, somebody couldn't just buy this property and go, hey, I've got access.
Right.
No, they cannot.
And I know you've got access to the other properties. Robin, what's the road that comes down that runs north-south?
Ebenezer Church Road.
That's Ebenezer, okay. Then you've got Spear at the bottom. I mean, there are access points where, if that property gets developed, I mean, there's access to it in some form or fashion.
But-
But not in the city, not coming out Carriage Lane or Stagecoach.
I guess, and I'm, I'm going to think out loud here. If we were to annex this, would it, would it be, in essence, blocking so that that other, that rest of that land could not develop and then create the traffic coming through?
I think what I'm hearing is, nobody gets to just decide they're going to connect to Peachtree City Street.
Right. So that easement is, it's protected, and, so in other words, we are stopping them?
It isn't. It isn't. There was a recent case a couple of years ago that talked about when a city or a county can in fact restrict access to a public road. It's not something that can be done as easily as you might think.
Right, Ted. But here, the way this development is presented, there is no paved road that touches the borders, and that was done intentionally. That would require the city, the Davis family, and the Hides to all agree, this is what we want to have happen. What I'm hearing, that'll never happen.
Well, that's for now. I mean, we're talking about the future. And that 50-foot street easement, I guess it would depend on what terms or rights were granted to the city under the terms of that easement.
But again, there's, there's no pavement on it. That's what I'm saying. As it stands right now, something would have to be conveyed.
Well, again, it depends on what the terms are of that 50-foot street easement and who those rights were conveyed to. If they are reserved to the property owners, I'm on the same page as you.
That's what I'm saying. It's not being conveyed to anybody.
If it's conveyed to the city, then that's what opens the concern.
Correct. It's better for it to remain, exactly like it's presented, it remains in the Hyde, whoever's going to own the property. It's not going to go, it's not being conveyed out of the, out of the current applicant, is what I'm saying.
Of course, they also, if they ever agreed to it, could use that and convey those rights to an adjacent property owner through which a road could be installed, and then connect it to a Peachtree City Street.
But it's still, you'd have to build the roads, which would require city approval, because it's inside the city. The city would have to approve.
So why don't we just remove the easement?
Just deed the property to the city.
And deed restrictions.
Well, there's just a lot of ifs. And I don't know that there's a-
There's no right answer, I don't think.
Well, I don't know if there's a right answer. I don't know if there's a wrong answer.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
We're getting into a lot of ifs and wondering-
So I'll make a motion that we table this until we can figure out if we can stop, if we were to annex or not, if we can stop the other, or will it just be automatic?
You can table it. Do you want to table it indefinitely? Do you want to table it for the next city council meeting?
Basically, it'd be a motion to continue, not table.
I'd like to make a motion, we continue this.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you. 3-2. Council staff topics?
Yes. Madam Mayor, I have a couple, if I may. I recently got involved with the 9/11 memorial that's going to be-
I'm sorry, Councilman, we got a lot of feedback. If we could just give-
I'll hold on for a second.
Yes, if we can please have-
I didn't object. We're not on a shock.
If we can please have some quiet. Thank you.
Can we keep the noise down, please?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I recently got involved with the 9/11 memorial that's-
Hold on, Councilmember. We really want to hear this. Excuse me?
Thank you.
Sir?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I recently got involved with the 9/11 memorial that's being held in Fayette County. It's coming up this Monday, and it's going to be held at the Sandy Creek High School at 7:45 in the morning. The junior ROTC from that school is going to be holding a ceremony there. The principal of that school, her name is Tasha Oliver, has granted to say, not granted, but allowed us from Peachtree City to come in, because we're all part of Fayette County. And basically, I've invited some 9/11 survivors, New York City firemen, policemen, to come and join us for that memorial. So if anyone here would like to go, it's, it's on 9/11. It's at Sandy Creek High School at 7:45 in the morning. I'd like, the citizens here at Peachtree City are more than welcome, according to the, the principal. Come on in, come and join in, and honor those people who got attacked on that day.
Sandy Creek's large. Where?
No, Sandy Creek High School. It's located on Jenkins Road, just off 74. So go north into Tyrone, take Jenkins Road to the right.
Beautiful. What else? What else do we have?
Okay. The other one I have is, there's a 9/11 memorial golf tournament coming up on October the 9th. I'd like you at least all be aware of that. This is called the Billy Kelly, since Billy Kelly was 9/11. Well, he's now passed on, but he was the one who did forensic work for the city of New York, and he's been a resident here many, many years in Peachtree City. He passed away last year. And this memorial golf tournament is being held at Braylon Country Club. And if you certainly want to reach out to me or someone here at the city, they'll be able to direct you to the people who are putting this event on, on October the 9th at the Braylon Country Club. I would encourage you all to come and join, because these were brave firemen and policemen that put their lives on the line. We need to honor them. And it's, by the way, being handled by tunnels to towers, just so you know who's behind all of this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Do we have executive session?
Yes, we do. I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss pending or threatened litigation and acquisition, sale-
So moved.
...or lease of real estate.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? We are in executive session.